We are live.
Good evening and welcome everybody to tonight's council meeting. First off, we'll be looking at our agenda. Madam Clerk?
Your Worship, I would like to amend the agenda to add under proclamation Melissa Shaw, Aquatic Superintendent, will join our meeting to proclaim July nineteenth to twenty-fifth as National Drowning and Prevention Week.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council, we're looking for a motion for this amended agenda.
Your Worship, I will move the adoption of the agenda as amended.
Thank you, Counselor Pless.
I will second that, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Toles. Counsel, we will go through the same as we've done in the past, and I'll just make sure that if anyone's got any questions, we'll just go through randomly generated order tonight. We'll keep it throughout the evening. First off, Counselor Friesen.
I'm fine with the amended agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Day.
No additions, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Bowditch.
Nothing to add, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Martins.
Nothing for me, thanks.
Counselor Toles.
All good.
Thank you, Counselor Pless.
Looks fine, thank you.
Excellent. Again, this agenda was circulated to us. We all had a chance to read through. It was moved by Counselor Pless, seconded by Counselor Toles. All those in favor? Counsel, the motion's passed. Next off, we'll be looking at the adoption of the minutes from the last meeting.
Your Worship, I will make said motion for the adoption of the minutes of the regular council meeting held on June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty.
Thank you, Counselor Martins.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Bowditch. Same thing, we did get these circulated to us. We did have a chance to read through, but I will go through and see if any counselors have any questions or comments. Counselor Friesen.
No questions. Thanks, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Dag.
I don't have any questions, sorry.
Thank you, Counselor Bowditch.
No questions, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Martins.
No questions, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Toles.
All good.
Thank you, Counselor Pless.
Nope, they look good to me, Your Worship.
Great. Moved by Counselor Martin, seconded by Counselor Bowditch. All those in favor? Counsel, this motion's passed. This evening, we've got two proclamations, and the first one will be for us, will be to declare Pride Week from June the twenty-eighth to July the fourth. And I'm just looking through our people we've got joining in today. I know I've got Braden Forbes, and I've got another one, I think. Dawn Caswell, I can't see your video, Dawn. But I'm assuming I can see that you are joined with us. And so with that, oh, there you are. Welcome. Welcome, Dawn and Braden, to our council meeting. You're here on behalf of Southwest Saskatchewan Pride, and I'll hand it over to you to give us some information before the proclamation is declared. Please go ahead and welcome to council.
Hi, thank you for having us. As mentioned, I'm Braden Forbes. I'm the Chair of Southwest Saskatchewan Pride this year, here in Southwest Saskatchewan. Just quickly, I wanted to thank our sponsors. TDs are presenting sponsor this year. They have been for the last couple of years. They've been really, really great to us. We have a bunch of other wonderful community sponsors who has helped us out. I also want to thank the board for their efforts in planning our digital pride because it was a really quick turnaround from how do we do this to, oh, wow, I guess we really are doing this. And the city for inviting us here to the proclamation. Thank you, guys. It's really, really great. We have a whole week of events set up. Quick trivia with Tuesday, Glenn Alexander at a livestream on Facebook at eight PM. An author reading with author Lexi Bean at one PM on Zoom. The winners of our decorating contest, the first we're hosting, are going to be announced on Thursday. There's some cash prizes, some gift cards, and you can enter in any one of the three categories that we have, either business, residential, or personal. And you just got to make sure you submit your pictures to our email before Wednesday, July first at midnight. Friday, we're going to be having a Netflix watch party for the death and life of Marsha P. Johnson. This was the black trans woman who was responsible for starting the Stonewall riot fifty-one years ago. That sort of helped spawn the global push for LGBTQ+ rights. In the midst of the largest civil rights movement in the history of the planet, now is more important than ever to help uplift and protect the lives and voices of marginalized people globally. It is critical we take the time to learn about ourselves and others to help build a better world for all people, regardless of what we may think separates us. The Netflix watch party will start at eight PM on Friday. Saturday is our drag doubleheader with a drag workshop and show being conducted by sadly Sally, a Saskatoon queen who moved there from Swift Current. The drag workshop will run from two PM to six PM on Zoom, and the show from eight until ten PM on Twitch. We're going to upload all the links and stuff to our Facebook page and our website so people can check them out as they want. And yeah, it's all sort of free. Anyone's welcome to come if you so desire. And I guess as a sort of closer, I wanted to thank Swift Current and Southwest Saskatchewan for their sort of continued trailblazing here in terms of LGBTQ+ plus visibility visibility and acceptance. So yeah, thanks for your support, everybody. Happy Pride.
Thanks so much, Braden. Very well prepared and excellent presentation. Dawn, do you have anything you'd like to add? You're good? Okay. With that, truly thank you, and I will open it up to council. If they've got any questions or comments for you, I'll start it off with Counselor Friesen.
Thanks, Your Worship, and thanks Braden and Dawn for being with us tonight. And I guess I think that, you know, the world will be a much better place when we are all treated with respect and dignity and there's equality. So I just want to say thank you to you and your group for all that you've done to move us in that direction and and wish you all the best with your activities this coming week. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Friesen. Well said. Counselor Dag.
Yes, I echo Counselor Friesen's sentiments as well. I'm also thankful to be part counselor for a city that is considered open and accepting. And, you know, it makes me feel pretty good, too. So yeah, thank you again for coming, you folks. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Dag. Counselor Bowditch.
Just want to say that I appreciate what you're doing and keep up the great work.
Counselor Martins.
Thanks, Your Worship. Thanks, Braden and Dawn, for coming on to the council meeting here tonight. I was happy to drive home from work today and see the pride flag nice raised up high here in the city of Swift Current. So that was pretty exciting for me to see. And I look forward to seeing all of the links that you placed on the Facebook pages, both who is really good to know that you were able to adapt, just the same as many of the other events that take place in Swift Current. Able to have a live, you know, virtual kind of Pride Week in this sense. So again, thank you, Braden and Dawn, for coming here, and I look forward to seeing those links and and hopefully, just as Counselor Friesen said, we keep moving forward the right way and go and keep moving on from there.
Counselor Martins, Counselor Toles.
Thank you, and thanks, Braden and Dawn, for being here and being part of our meeting tonight. And sorry, I missed the flag raising. That's the first one I've missed in forever. But the day just didn't work for me. So thanks for being here and for being a part of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Toles. Counselor Pless.
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. One of the detriments to go on last in these things, as everybody's already said, all the good things that can be said, but I just wanted to say thanks to both of you for attending the meeting tonight. Thanks for the work you're doing in our community as well as throughout the entire Southwest. And I've made some notes here, and I hope everybody can go check out some of the Facebook events and links that you guys are posting so that they can continue to to explore how we can all be more open, and how we can all be more inclusive and live as one community. So thanks for coming tonight.
Thanks. All very well said. I think all of us on council, we share the same sentiment, and we're very proud to have an open and inclusive community. I know for myself as a parent and for all of us as parents, all we want for our kids is to be welcomed and to be able to find a place in this world. And I'm very grateful, Braden, for the work that you and Dawn are doing to help make that possible for those that sometimes have a little bit more of a struggle. So as the Mayor for the City of Swift Current, and on behalf of this council, I do hereby proclaim June the twenty-eighth to July the fourth, two thousand and twenty, as Pride Week. And I have the official proclamation here in my hand. Well, I don't know if it's going to show up on the video, but we'll we'll get it ready for you guys so that you've got an official document. And as you heard from Counselor Martins, Braden yourself and Dawn, we had the chance to fly the flag today, and it will be flying throughout the week here in Swift Current. So all the very best to all your activities that you'll be happening. And truly, truly all the best. Thank you for the good work that you continue to do. Thanks for being here.
Thank you so much, guys.
Well, counsel, that gets us through our first proclamation. Our next proclamation will be talking about National Drowning Prevention Week. And we're joined by our City of Swift Current Aquatic Superintendent Melissa Shaw. She's here to proclaim July the nineteenth to July the twenty-fifth as National Drowning Prevention Week. Welcome back to council, Mrs. Shaw.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Worship, members of council and the community of Swift Current. I'd like to take this opportunity to announce July nineteenth to twenty-fifth as National Drowning Prevention Week in Swift Current and across the entire country. Two thousand and twenty has brought us some unique challenges to so many different areas of everyone's lives. But one thing has remained the same: the Canadians love water. As the opening of Saskatchewan's beaches and swimming pools, that excitement has remained unbelievable. But unfortunately, as millions of Canadians take to the water, aquatic injuries and fatalities occur. According to the latest National Drowning Report, approximately four hundred people still drowned annually. It's important to note that these statistics do not include the people who were seriously injured and narrowly missed a fatal ending. Studies show that these drownings happen for a variety of reasons. Ninety-six percent of children who drowned were swimming without supervision. Eighty-eight percent of young adults who drowned were boating without a PFD. Sixty percent of adults who drowned drowned when they were a weak swimmer and did not know how to swim. The greatest tragedy is that all of these accidents were preventable. In recognition of the hundreds of lives that could be saved every year in Canada, the Life-saving Society of Canada has developed a Water Smart Campaign and National Drowning Prevention Week. In Swift Current, at Fairview Pool, we'll be hosting special events to promote water awareness throughout the week of July nineteenth to twenty-fifth. Some of these activities will include a coloring contest, social media information, themed days at the pools with respect to social distancing, such as Watch Me, Not Your Phone, Boat Smart, Don't Break the Ice, Swim with a Buddy, and PFD Day. Similar to years past, we challenge everyone in the community to come and try the Swim to Survive standard, which is a roll into deep water, tread water for one minute, and then swim for fifty meters on Wednesday, July twenty-second. The goal of the Life-saving Society is to reach twenty thousand people through the education provided through National Drowning Prevention Week. And in Swift Current, we are looking forward to helping them with that challenge. We are all encouraging all residents of Swift Current to be aware of the impact of water safety. When utilizing Fairview Pool, the Swift Current Creek, Black Pelche, Dunn Karen Dam, Saskatchewan Landing, and all surrounding waters of water, we encourage everyone to know what water they are swimming in, including the depth, the water current, weather forecasts, and if it's a designated swimming area. All of the above help to encourage everyone around you to stay safe and make sure that you're always swimming with that buddy. Beyond swimming with a buddy, we encourage all parents and guardians to put their cell phones down and remember to watch small children and weak swimmers while around the water. Last year, during swimming lessons, my own daughter let go of the edge. She quickly sunk to the bottom of the pool. Thankfully, the lifeguard saw her sinking and quickly pulled her to the top. There was no screaming, no splashing, just a little girl sinking. The ending for us was a lesson in not to let go of the edge and to listen to your instructor. But the reality is, is that drowning is silent and only takes a moment. It's also important to remember when boating that all members of the boat are properly wearing a properly fitted PFD, not just having them there to sit on. Boaters need to remember to tell someone where they are going and a rough estimate of when they'll be back. So if they run into problems, family and friends know where to start looking. For more information about the opening of Fairview Pool on July the sixth and our schedule, or National Drowning Prevention Week, please feel free to call us at three zero six seven seven eight two seven three five, or visit the city's website at swiftcurrent.ca/aquatics. Thank you for the time and for proclaiming July nineteenth to twenty-fifth, National Drowning Prevention Week.
Thank you, Mrs. Shaw, and thanks so much for being here. I will go around the horn to see if any of our counselors have any questions or comments, and I'll start it off with Counselor Friesen.
Well, thank you, Your Worship. Thanks, Melissa, for being with us once again. This is a type of message that I think we could be reminded of more than just annually. It's good to have you come and let us know and talk about the facts and figures and the things that we can do to keep ourselves and our families safe. And I just wish you well with the opening of the pool. I know everybody's just waiting for that pool to open. And I guess the question I would have would be, are you doing, is there going to be regular swimming lessons, or is that possible this year?
No, we've made the decision not to offer swimming lessons for the summer. After weighing the restrictions, the requirements, we've decided to hold off until the fall to move forward with swimming lessons.
Perfect. Thank you, Counselor Friesen. Counselor Dag.
Well, thanks, Melissa. Very well said. And I'm glad they're not going to have any swimming lessons. You know, I know the kids are going to miss out on that, but just the restrictions and, you know, the possible contamination or whatever we would be dealing with. I think that's a good idea. And thanks again for presenting today.
Thank you.
Hey, Counselor Dag. Counselor Bowditch.
Okay. Thanks, Melissa. Really appreciate you bringing back all the reminders and all that. I myself, once upon a time, was rescued when I stepped off the Cypress Pool into the water when I was very, very young. But it's something you never forget, and you never want to have that happen ever again, because it's a pretty scary sight of the bar feeling at the bottom of the pool, wondering if you're going to get up or what's going to happen here. So keep up the great work, Melissa, and thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Bowditch. Counselor Martins.
Thanks, Your Worship. Hi, Melissa, and welcome again. Thanks for coming to council and sharing. I completely agree with what Counselor Friesen said. This is a message that we could hear, you know, way more than annually. I mean, once a week, you know, if you need to, like, it's it's nothing but important information. And I, one thing that you actually mentioned really stood out is Watch Me, Not Your Phone. Like, that's in this day and age with technology, that is, that could not be more true. You know, our oldest is in swimming lessons, and we did our absolute best and a conscious effort, phones in pockets or phones in the locker room. So you have no, you know, no distractions. Granted, there's a lifeguard there, but you always want to make sure that you're be cognizant of it, because then, once you're out of that area and you're suddenly in the, you know, in a beach setting, that's all it takes. Like you just said, a split second, and you turn, and you look one way, and you look down, and your whole world can change. So definitely very good reminders. And just your audio, at least on my end, kind of cut a little bit in and out when you were mentioning your phone numbers and the and where the information could be. So could you just repeat that one more time?
Absolutely. They can call Fairview Pool directly at three zero six seven seven eight two seven three five, or they can visit the city's website at swiftcurrent.ca/aquatics, and that'll take you directly to our schedule and all of our information.
Perfect. Thank you.
Hey, Counselor Martins. Counselor Toles.
Melissa, thanks so much for being here. And I think a lot of people are looking forward to the opening of Fairview Pool, and I expect you'll see a fairly full, as full as it can be, crowd. But I've already seen a lot of people swimming in the creek, and so this is an important message to get out during this. Best of luck with your Water Smart campaign and keep up the good work. Thanks.
Counselor Toles. Counselor Pless.
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. One of my first real jobs was as a lifeguard and swimming instructor right here in the city of Swift Current. So this is one of the reports that I always look forward to every year, and just at the start of summer being a really timely occasion to bring these things up. So Melissa, thanks for your report. You know, thanks especially for me to, for you, for you sharing your personal story. You know, as a parent to three young kids, it makes my blood run cold to even hear of that stuff. But it's a great reminder that tragedies happen in seconds, and that's why prevention is such an important thing to take seriously. It's not just something we want to, you know, it's not something we just want to recognize every year and move on to the next thing. It's really a way of life when you're around the water. You know, being vigilant is one thing, but prevention goes a long ways, whether it's, you know, we talked about lots and fire prevention. We talk about it every year as well around National Drowning Prevention Week as well. So, you know, thanks for sharing your story. That probably has scared me into being a little bit more vigilant all summer long, and hopefully that will do have the same message for other parents out there as well. So thank you very much and have a great summer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Shaw, and thanks. All very well said from our council. As the Mayor for the City of Swift Current and on behalf of this council, I do hereby proclaim July the nineteenth till July the twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty, as National Drowning Prevention Week. And Mrs. Shaw, you'll be able to come pick this up at City Hall, and we'll definitely send it out to you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much. Have a great week. Counsel, that gets us through our proclamations for this evening and gets us into items for action. We will be starting it off with our two thousand and nineteen annual financial statements, and we're joined by Tracy Nullet and Alicia Laird of M&amp;P. They're our city auditors, and they're here to present these statements to us. Welcome to council.
Good evening. Good evening, council, and if there are guests. My name is Tracy Nullet. I am here representing M&amp;P. We are dependent auditors that are appointed by council to provide an opinion on the financial statements presented or prepared by management. In informing our opinion, we have to take into account certain, obviously, the financial statements, the numbers themselves, also the going concern of the entity, any internal controls that could cause higher risk, riskier areas that are in this financial statement, and just the overall structure. So our opinion is provided in a report, I think, in your package. And in our opinion, the company financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the city as at December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, and the results of its operations and its cash flows for the year ended in accordance with Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards.
Perfect. Well, thank you so much. And for the public's benefit, should know that we, as a council, had a chance to go through these numbers in depth after our last council meeting where we went in camera, and we had Alicia and Tracy join us then, as well as our city team. We had a chance to ask any questions, to go through those things. And we, as a council or as a board, can gain assurance in the work that's been done by this third-party auditor. And with that, before I get, we do have a motion, maybe before I bring the motion forward, counsel, I will go through and see if any of you have any questions, either for Alicia or Tracy, or for our our General Manager of Corporate Services, Carrie, sorry, Ms. Cobbler. And I'll start it off with Counselor Friesen.
Thanks, Your Worship. I don't have any further questions, and just thanks to Carrie and Alicia and Tracy for putting forward such a great piece of work. Thank you.
Counselor Friesen. Counselor Dag.
I have no questions, Your Worship. Thank you.
Counselor Bowditch.
I'm the same way. No questions, Your Worship.
You, Counselor Martins.
No questions from you, Your Worship. Thanks.
Counselor Toles.
Just thanks to everybody for getting these into our hands a couple weeks ago, so we had a chance to go through them. Thank you all.
Thank you, Counselor Pless.
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. Ladies from M&amp;P, thanks for coming to this meeting here tonight. As the Mayor, as well as Counselor Toles, said, we've had an opportunity to look at these things for a while. And while they're maybe not the most interesting reading, you know, it is an important function that we have as counselors for the city to make sure that we're reviewing these things. And I just wanted for the public to know, or just to restate it, that that we, as a council, do have an opportunity to sit down, both with management and the auditors, and then separately with just the auditors, to ensure that we're comfortable with where our financial statements are at. And I'm happy to report, at least that I am, in no small part, because we have a lot of trust in our team. But auditing is a requirement of the act, and we know that you guys do a superb job of working with our team to come up with these reports at the end of the day. Particularly, I wanted to say thanks for making this work in the world of COVID. I'm sure that auditing wasn't the most it's certainly a different world in all respects, and I'm sure auditing certainly reflects that as well. So one, just to say thanks to all parties involved in making sure that we can get these things out in due course as well, and look forward to voting on it here shortly. So thanks for your attendance tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Pless. And with that, counsel, I will be looking for a motion to adopt the two thousand and nineteen annual financial statements as presented.
Your Worship, I'd be pleased to make that motion that we adopted two thousand and nineteen annual statements as presented.
Thank you, Counselor Dag.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Friesen. This motion was made by Counselor Dag. It's seconded by Counselor Friesen. All those in favor? Counsel, the motion's passed. Next up, we have a copy of our annual public accounts, and I'll hand it over to Ms. Cobbler to walk through them.
Thank you and good evening, Your Worship and members of the
My apologies. I'm just going to jump in real fast. Although I'm sure our auditors would love to stay for the rest of our meeting, I believe they're going to head out and probably get back to some more work. So thank you, Alicia and Tracy, for being with us today and for the work that you've done. We'll see you soon. My apologies, Ms. Cobbler. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship, and good evening, Your Worship and members of council. The city's act requires publication of the municipal public accounts by September first of each year. This report contains certain financial data not formally covered in the year-end financial statements. The attached statements and schedules have been prepared in accordance with these requirements from the same records from which the audited financial statements have been extracted. The municipal public accounts include a consolidated statement of operations, which contains the revenue and expense totals for the year ended December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. Council remuneration and expenses, listing the total remuneration and expenses for all city council members. Employee remuneration, which lists the names, most recent job title, and salary for each employee of the City of Swift Current, whose remuneration exceeded fifty thousand dollars in two thousand and nineteen. Contributions of goods or services, listing the total of all payments other than salaries exceeding fifty thousand dollars to any individual corporation or government. And finally, grants or services in aid, which lists the total contributions exceeding fifty thousand dollars to any individual corporation or government. The statements and schedules in this report consolidate the information of all City of Swift Current operations, including utilities. This report is therefore respectfully submitted this twenty-ninth day of June, two thousand and twenty.
So much, Ms. Cobbler. Counsel, we will need a motion.
Your Worship, I will move that we accept the public accounts as presented by the General Manager of Corporate Services.
Thank you, Counselor Toles.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Martins. With that, we will go around the horn, see if anybody's got any questions or comments from Ms. Cobbler, and I'll start it off with Counselor Friesen.
No questions or comments. Thanks, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Dag.
All good, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Bowditch.
No questions, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Martins.
No questions, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Toles.
No, just thanks again for having them to us a couple weeks ago to look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pless.
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. I also appreciate getting these things in advance. And in a world where, you know, you hear lots of news stories where there's maybe some problems with disclosure in different municipalities, this is another thing that it's actually an old requirement. We've done this for, well, I don't even know when it started, but certainly more than eleven years ago when we were first on council. But just another tool that the province has to ensure that the public is getting full disclosure and full transparency of the folks that they elect to serve them and the folks who work for the city as well. So yeah, just, you know, a routine thing for us. I'll certainly be in support.
Thank you, Counselor Pless. This motion was made by Counselor Toles. It's seconded by Counselor Martins. All those in favor? Counsel, the motion's passed. We'll go down to our next section with our set of accounts. I'll hand the back over to Mrs. Cobbler.
Thank you. And close to the general revenue fund disbursements for the period of June fifteenth to nineteenth, two thousand and twenty. I respectfully recommend that two million, four hundred sixteen thousand, six hundred three dollars and eighty-nine cents in disbursements be approved. Included in that amount is a payment of three hundred seventy-six thousand for payroll benefits, a payment of eight hundred fifty thousand for the purchase of energy, a payment of nineteen thousand for power costs and city facilities outside of our franchise area, payment of nineteen thousand for natural gas costs at city facilities, a payment of thirty thousand for costs associated with the downtown storm drainage study, lift station, and force main upgrades, as well as an update to the rural water network, payments of twelve thousand and twenty-nine thousand for the purchase of chemicals for use by the water treatment plant, a payment of twenty-four thousand for the purchase of catch basins and water and sewer inventory to be used by the Public Works Department, a payment of one hundred forty-six thousand for the purchase of a replacement snow blower for the airport, a payment of twenty-seven thousand for the purchase and delivery of gravel for use by streets and transportation, a progress payment of one hundred seventy-four thousand for costs associated with the two thousand and twenty paving maintenance contract, a payment of sixteen thousand for costs associated with the filter control line replacement at the water treatment plant, a payment of thirteen thousand for costs related to dust control on Battleford Trail and Eighteenth Avenue Southeast, a payment of forty-eight thousand for costs associated with the Windscape irrigation project, payment of fifty-three thousand for replacement of vehicle extrication tools for the fire department, a payment of forty-nine thousand for recycling depot and swift transit operations for the month of May, payment of thirty-nine thousand for landfill operations, a payment of one hundred eleven thousand for garbage collection, a payment of seventeen thousand for software development costs, and finally, a payment of thirty-two thousand for costs associated with the traffic control policy, road rehabilitation, Chaplain Street Bridge rehabilitation, Waker Road realignment redesign, I'm sorry, water distribution upgrades, and Chinook Parkway extension.
Thank you, Ms. Cobbler. Counsel, we're looking for a motion.
Your Worship, I'll make the motion that we pay the disbursements of two million, four hundred sixteen thousand, six hundred and three dollars and eighty-nine cents, and that would be for the period of fifteen to the nineteenth.
Thank you, Counselor Bowditch. Looking for a second or?
Yeah, I'll second that, Your Worship. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Dag. Counsel, do you have any questions? We'll go through the same order. Counselor Friesen.
Nothing. Thanks, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Counsel Dig.
Nothing for me. Thanks.
Counsel Baudich.
No questions, Your Worship.
Thanks. Counsel Martins.
Nothing for me. Thanks.
Thanks, Counsel Tolls.
All good. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Pless.
No, it's pretty clear. Thank you.
Thank you. This motion was made by Counsel Baudich. It has been seconded by Counsel Dig. Counsel, all those in favor? This motion's passed. Ms. Cobbler, I believe you have the floor.
Thank you. The subject of this report is the Municipal Economic Enhancement Program 2020 Funding Agreement. On May 6th, 2020, the province of Saskatchewan announced the Municipal Economic Enhancement Program 2020, or MEET, which will provide $150 million in grant funding to municipalities across Saskatchewan to support investments in infrastructure to stimulate economic recovery and encourage local job creation. This funding will be distributed to individual municipalities on a per capita basis, based on the 2016 Canadian Census population numbers. Under this program, the City of Swift Current is eligible to receive $2,386,467 in grant funding, which must be spent by March 31st, 2022. Program funding can be allocated by the municipality to fund eligible capital expenditures incurred to complete approved capital projects in a broad range of infrastructure categories, including connectivity, disaster mitigation, drinking water, engineering and feasibility studies, green energy, local roads and bridges, municipal equipment, municipally owned buildings and assets, planning and development, protective services, public health, solid waste, recreation, culture, tourism and sport, and finally wastewater and stormwater. To participate in the program, the city must submit a signed funding agreement, a project plan detailing the projects that will be funded, as well as a council resolution supporting the projects by July 17th, 2020. Administration has completed an analysis of upcoming capital investment projects that had previously been identified in the five-year capital plan, published as part of the 2020 municipal budget. Project readiness, scope and timing of work, as well as risk and impact to residents and users, were factors considered during project review. After careful consideration, two projects have been identified as eligible for MEET funding and are proposed for inclusion in the project plan. The Freezin Street Storm Rehabilitation Project falls within the wastewater and stormwater category. The current storm sewer main along Freezin Street from 3rd Avenue Southeast to Riverside Park was installed 65 years ago and has exceeded its estimated service life. This infrastructure has also been identified in the servicing master plan as being undersized to adequately serve the needs of the properties in this area. If a failure were to occur in this storm line, there is the potential that up to eight blocks of homes could be negatively impacted. The scope of work will continue, will include rerouting and upsizing 650 meters of existing storm main with PVC piping, installing catch basins in intersections, lanes and mid-block low points, as well as paving and sidewalk repairs in the affected area. The cost to complete the Freezin Street Storm Rehabilitation Project is estimated to be $2,300,000, of which $2,191,000 in funding will be allocated from the MEET program. This project has been identified in the five-year capital plan for several years, and it has been deferred a number of times. However, by moving this project forward into the 2020 capital budget and allocating MEET funding to continue the work, or to complete the work rather, the city is able to lessen the risk of failure, rehabilitate aging infrastructure and increase service level to residents in this area. The Fairview Arena floor and header replacement project is also proposed for MEET funding under the recreation, culture, tourism and sport category. This facility was constructed 43 years ago, and the ice surface on the east side still has the original header system, brine lines, insulation and floor construction. A recent inspection of the existing header has shown that it is at risk of failure due to corrosion. If a failure were to occur, this ice surface would be unusable for the remainder of the season, putting programming for a significant number of user groups at risk. The boards and glass on this surface are also original and are warped, cracked and in need of repair. The scope of work will include replacement of the sand floor with a concrete surface, installation of a new header system, as well as replacement of the boards and glass. To complete, the cost to complete the Fairview Arena floor and header replacement project is estimated to be $950,000, of which $195,000 would be funded through the MEET program. By moving this project into the 2020 capital budget, not only will the city ensure this facility remains fully operational for the upcoming season, but operational costs are estimated to be reduced due to increased energy efficiencies by installing a concrete floor. With two concrete surfaces located at Fairview Arena, there is also an opportunity to provide much needed additional floor space to user groups in the community. Even though the combined value of these two projects is in excess of the city's allocation from MEET, any additional costs incurred are the responsibility of the municipality. No additional tax increase will be required to fund the city's portion of these projects. It is therefore respectfully recommended that council approve an addition of $2,300,000 to the 2020 capital budget for the Freezin Street Storm Rehabilitation, that council approve an addition of $950,000 to the 2020 capital budget for the Fairview Arena floor and header replacement, and that council approve the submission of Freezin Street Storm Rehabilitation and Fairview Arena floor and header replacement in the project plan included in the Municipal Economic Enhancement Program 2020 Funding Agreement, and that the mayor be authorized to sign the Municipal Economic Enhancement Program 2020 Funding Agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Cobbler. Just a reminder to counsel, there are three separate motions. So I will be looking for a mover and a secondary for the first one.
Your Worship, I'll move that council approve an addition of $2.3 million to the 2020 capital budget for the Freezin Street Storm Rehabilitation Project.
Thank you, Counsel Freezin.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counsel Pless. And first off, we will go through to see if anybody's got any questions or comments for Ms. Cobbler. Counsel Freezin?
Well, I guess this is just a general comment. It's very nice to see us get that grant and to be able to do these projects. And the Freezin Street Rehabilitation sounds like it really needs to be done, and the sooner the better. So it's thanks to the province for providing that funding for us and and for us to be able to get that done this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Freezin. Very well said. Counsel Dig.
I had nothing to add. Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel Baudich.
Nothing further on that part, Your Worship.
Counsel Martins.
I just wanted to add, thanks to the city admin for combing through the the projects that or potential for this MEET grant funding. You know, it's no simple task to go through the number of items that a city requires and the needs that we have. So thank you for them defining two important ones and utilizing it the best way possible.
Counsel Martins, Counsel Tolls.
Thank you, Worship. During our pre-budget deliberations back in the fall, we had a chance to look at both of these projects, and they both absolutely have to be done. We can't have people being without without water servicing for long periods of time in case of emergency. So I will certainly be in support of this motion.
Thank you. Counsel Pless.
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. I think everybody's familiar with the term infrastructure deficit, and our community is certainly no, not exempt from that, among other communities. There's no end to the list of projects that a person could have, or that a municipality could apply for for these types of funds. So I'm I'm really glad that, as Counselor Toll said, we had the opportunity to actually go out and tour to see some of these, some of the needs in our community. Because when these sorts of things come up, not only do we already have them in our five-year budget plan from a capital perspective, but we also have some, you know, on the ground or, you know, firsthand perspective of what these projects are. And as Counselor Toll said, they are very much projects that are needing to be done in our community and may not have otherwise been done without grant funding, or certainly would not have been done this year without grant funding, but may continue to be pushed back in future years. So this is a very welcome thing. I'll certainly be in support of all three motions here tonight, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counsel Pless, and thank you, counsel, for all the discussion. I think you're all exactly right. It's, we're very grateful to be seeing these dollars coming our way. And to admin, thank you. Thank you for the work that it took to comb through the projects, to find the right ones. We have an infinite amount of requests and a very finite amount of dollars. So I think you've done a good job of highlighting the the key priorities. This motion was made by, this motion was made, sorry. Right here. Motion was made by Counsel Freezin and was seconded by Counsel Pless. Counsel, all those in favor? Motion's passed. We'll leave the second motion, please.
Your Worship, I'll move that we approve an addition of $950,000 to the 2020 capital budget for the Fairview Arena floor and header replacement project.
And I'll second this as well, Your Worship.
Thank you. We will go through again, counsel, to see if you have any questions or comments. Counsel Freezin?
Nothing more to add. I'll be glad to see this project completed and and it'll be much better for the for the Fairview Arena.
Thank you, Counsel Dig.
Thank you, Your Worship. Yes, I'm very pleased to see this project going ahead. I think that we would be in danger of losing a season on that ice would be detrimental to our community. We're short of ice as it is. And so I think rectifying it before the season starts, or, you know, it might go into the season a little bit. I think it's a it's a great opportunity for us. Economically, with the savings that will we will incur with this, you know, with the ice plant being updated and with the header at least. And, you know, a lot, we don't have as much loss of of the heat in the system and the usability. And during the summertime, you know, that that facility will be used for numerous things, including lacrosse, whatever, you know, it'll be a lot more usable. Thank you. I'll be supporting this motion.
I think you, Counsel Baudich.
Thank you, Worship. Yes, I just want to say that I do fully, fully support this particular repair, because it's been there for a lot of years, and our community needs the three ranks, because it's 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 vital. Otherwise, we'd be short on ice. So I'll be supporting it. And thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Martins.
Thanks, Your Worship. Everyone else has already said everything that really needed to be said. So I'll, nothing else for me.
Thank you, Counsel Tolls.
Thank you, Worship. And again, we had the chance to see, to visit Fairview Arena and see it. In fact, we've been there three or four years in a row looking at this. And I guess it's that the time has come to fix it. And and as Counsel Pless said, we have some money to help us with that. So it definitely has to be done. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Pless.
I have nothing to add. Thanks, Your Worship.
Thank you. This motion was made by Counsel Freezin, seconded by Counsel Pless. All those in favor? This motion's passed. The third and final motion, please.
Thanks, Your Worship. I'll move that we approve the submission of the Freezin Street Storm Rehabilitation and the Fairview Arena floor and header replacement in the project plan included in the MEET 2020 Funding Agreement, and that yourself be authorized to sign said agreement.
I can second that, Your Worship.
Thank you, counsel. We will go through again to see if there's any questions or comments. I'll start it off with Counsel Freezin.
No further comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dig.
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Nothing heavy.
Thank you, Counsel Martins.
Nothing further to add. Thank you.
Counsel Tolls.
All good. Thanks.
Thanks, Counsel Pless.
No comments or questions. Thanks.
Motion was made by Counsel Freezin, seconded by Counsel Pless. All those in favor? Counsel, the motion's passed. Please go ahead, Ms. Cobbler.
Thank you. The subject of this report is borrowing for capital investments. This report is a request for additional debt, which will require a borrowing bylaw. Under the City's Act, a city may only borrow money if the borrowing is authorized by a borrowing bylaw. Using debt to finance infrastructure investments distributes the cost of long-term assets across generations of residents who will utilize those assets. As a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, interest rates have fallen to an all-time low in an effort to stimulate investment in the economy, making this an optimal time to secure long-term borrowings. When the 2020 municipal budget was approved on December 16th, 2019, new debt in the amount of $9,588,21 was required to complete the funding of the 2020 capital investment projects. Due to COVID-19 restrictions and an uncertain construction season, capital projects have been deferred to 2021, resulting in a reduction of the amount of borrowings that are required to complete projects within general government, the Water and Wastewater Utility, as well as the Rural Water Utility. Overall, $5,998,821 in new debt is required. The sources of money to support the principal and interest payments for the borrowings are fully funded as per the 2020 municipal budget, with no future increases required from this report. The total required by each of those areas is as follows. General Government requires $4,343,821, which includes borrowings allocated toward the installation of concrete floor and replacement of the header at Fairview Arena, continued Chinook Parkway development, rehabilitation of 11th Avenue Northwest, replacement of the Chaplain Street Bridge expansion joints, realignment of the intersection at Battleford Trail and Central Avenue North, and rehabilitation of paved streets, sidewalk and curbing. The Water and Wastewater Utility Fund requires $1,150,000 in new borrowings, which are intended to fund the replacement of a portion of the water treatment plant roof, improvements to residual management at the water treatment plant, upgrades to the North Hill Reservoir, replacement of filter turbidometers and rehabilitation programs for hydrants, water valves, pressure reducing valves and sanitary manholes. The Rural Water Utility Fund requires $505,000 in new borrowings, which are allocated for upgrades to the East Pipeline and land purchase for pump hoses. As of December 31st, 2019, the principal amount of debt for general government and utility operations was $60,649,750, including the recommended amount of borrowings to fund the 2020 capital investments. The forecasted principal amount of debt outstanding as at December 31st, 2020 is $61,282,068, resulting in a forecasted year-over-year increase in general government and utility operations debt of $634,318. A request for financing proposals in the amount of $5,998,821 to fund 2020 capital investments will be sent out to the various financial institutions who have responded in the past. It is therefore respectfully recommended that notice of motion be given at this time by advising the council, the the public of council's intention to consider a borrowing bylaw for financing within general government and utility operations.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cobbler. Counsel, we looking for motion?
My Worship, I will make said motion. Recommend the notice of motion be given at this time by advising the public with council's intention to consider a borrowing bylaw for financing within general government and utility operations.
Thank you, Counsel Martins.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Thank Counsel Freezin. We will go around and see if anybody's got any questions or comments in regards to this report. I'll start it off with Counsel Freezin.
Well, thanks, Your Worship. And this is quite a good list of projects. I'd say we're getting value for this work or for the debt that we're going to be taking out. And I guess as much as we all don't like debt, the fact that there's only going to be a year-over-year increase of just over $600,000 is a positive for me to see with and knowing that we're getting all these projects completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Freezin. Counsel Dig.
Nothing to add, Your Worship.
Counsel Baudich.
Yes, Your Worship. I echo Counsel Freezin's comments. And I just want to say that with the upgrades and the replacements that we have to do, we have to look after our infrastructure. And if we wait much longer, we either will have a catastrophic failure in something, or we the upgrades and the replacements that we have to do, we have to look after our infrastructure and if we wait much longer, we either will have a catastrophic failure in something or we uh we will lose our uh basically our very valuable infrastructure. We just can't do that, so I will be supporting your worship.
Thank you, Council Baudage. Council Martins?
Um, I'm simply echoing what Council Freezen and Council Baudage said as well, too. Um, well said, and nothing more for me.
Thank you, Council Tools.
No, I think Council Freezen said we don't like to see new debt, but we are, as I understand from the reports we saw earlier, we are paying back our debt at a at a bigger rate than we're taking it out, so we're we're managed to maintain pretty much stability in that area. So I think we we need to do this to to do these projects.
Thank you so much, and Council Pluus.
Yeah, thank you, worship. Um, all well said. You know, uh, the list of things is self-explanatory. We've talked about most of those things before, but I just wanted to say uh to our admin team that I really appreciate how um we talked about debt in terms of piecemealing it out between utilities. I I as a as a resident, much less as a counselor, I really like to be able to see where those spending, where those debt uh are being carried. So in this case, we see some of it in the general revenue. Uh, but there's, you know, quite a bit within our utilities as well, and it's important to note that those utilities are responsible uh to fund that debt themselves. So those things aren't dealt with by tax increases. Those things are dealt with within the utility. Uh, they have to run on a break-even basis uh at minimum every year, so. You know, uh, quite a bit of that borrowing is through the utilities. Those are the things that uh help ensure that when you flush the toilet, your problems go away. When you turn the taps on, the water comes out. So those are, of course, very important things for communities to invest in. And as Counselor uh Freezen alluded to, you know, I always appreciate looking at this in terms of net new debt because certainly, yes, we have uh, you know, just over. Sorry, what is the number here? I'm looking at about six million dollars of of new debt being taken out. It's important to note that during that time, over the course of the year, we, of course, retire debt as well. We make debt payments over the year. And the the uh the debt that we're retiring almost certainly has a higher interest rate than the new debt that we're taking out. So there's a significant savings for the for residents in the city uh in that alone. But to to know that we're only actually increasing our net new debt by six hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars uh in a difficult year is encouraging to me. So um I thought those were important points to to raise, your worship, but I think, you know, the the key here is the interest rate is so uh reasonably cheap, historically low right now, I think is maybe the best way to put it, that we are experiencing some significant savings just by the fact that we're basically replacing old debt with new debt, but at a much less uh much less cost of borrowing. That's it. Thanks, your worship.
I thank you, Council Pluus, and thank you all of council for for helping sum this up. All the comments, I I don't think I need to repeat. All very well said. This motion is made by Council Martins, seconded by Council Freezen. All those in favor? Counsel, this motion's passed. Uh, Mr. Minkin, you're up.
Thank you, and uh good evening, your worship and members of council. This report deals with the Chaplain Street Bridge Expansion Joint Replacement. The Chaplain Street Bridge was originally constructed in nineteen fifty-four. Condition assessments in two thousand eleven, two thousand and fourteen, and two thousand and nineteen revealed that the bridge requires items to be repaired, such as the replacement of the deck expansion joints, sandblasting and painting the girder ends, repairs to concrete, and repairing the accident damage to the bridge rail on the northwest corner. Since surface repairs will be required after the deck joint replacement, a full mill and pave of the asphalt surface following construction is also recommended. The final cost estimate in uh WSP's preliminary engineering report for the construction of these repairs was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The Chaplain Street Bridge Expansion Joint Replacement Project is approved in the two thousand twenty capital budget for four hundred thousand dollars with with the additional funds allocated to cover design engineering, construction management, and the paving. In May two thousand twenty, WSP and the city tendered the construction of the bridge repairs on SAS tenders. Four submissions were received ranging from five hundred and seventy-one thousand eight hundred dollars to one million and forty thousand dollars, PST included, GST excluded, with the lowest bid being from PCL Construction. An outlying bid item to sandblast and repaint the bridge girder ends was much higher than anticipated due to safety and environmental requirements for sandblasting in the proximity of the Swift Current Creek. This item accounted for approximately two hundred thousand dollars of the total bid price. The tendering process was reviewed with the city solicitor who provided fri- provided guidance to move this project forward. Due to all bids coming in over budget, the tender for this project was canceled. Following the cancellation, PCL Construction agreed to enter into a non-tendered agreement with the city to complete the project with an altered scope of work with the painting removed as the painting is not considered to be a critical task at this time. The submission for this new scope of work is two hundred and fifty-six thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and eight cents, PST included, GST excluded. Several bridges in the city require repainting. Therefore, the sandblasting and painting of the Chaplain Street Bridge will be budgeted in the future year. The total cost of this project, including design engineering and construction management services and the paving will be within the capital budget of four hundred thousand dollars. Is therefore respectfully recommended that the Chaplain Street Bridge Expansion Joint Replacement Contract be awarded to PCL Construction Management, Inc., for a total of two hundred and fifty-six thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and eight cents, PST included, GST excluded, and the and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the Chaplain Street Bridge Expansion Joint Replacement Contract.
Thank you, Mr. Minkin. Counsel, we will be looking for a motion.
Your worship, I will move Mr. Minkin's recommendation.
Thank you, Council Pluus.
I'll second that, your worship.
Thank you, Council Baudage. We will go through and see if anybody's got any questions or comments. For our general manager, I'll start it off with uh Council Freezen.
No questions, your worship.
Thank you, Council Dig.
I know questions. Thanks.
Thanks, Council Baudage.
Nothing further, your worship.
Thank you, Council Martins.
I have no questions, your worship.
Thank you, Council Tools.
No, another example of us to look at in our pre-budget discussion, so it certainly has to be done.
Thank you, Council Pluus.
Uh, nothing other than just to say that I'm appreciative that uh administration found a way to get this project done, although maybe not within the the full scope of what they're originally planning, but uh to be able to get meat and potatoes of the work done uh within the budget that was approved. So that's it. Thanks, your worship.
Council Pluus, and thank you, council. Uh, this motion is made by Council Pluus and seconded by Council Baudage. All those in favor? Counsel, this motion's passed. Mr. Minkin, please continue on.
Thank you. Uh, this report deals with the Triways Residential Waste Collection Contract. Since September of two thousand fourteen, Triways Disposal Service Limited has been providing waste collection services to the residents of Swift Current. Over that time, they have increased their local employment from four individuals to twenty-one, moved into a facility located on South Railway Street and purchased and recently purchased a second facility at seven forty-two Brown Avenue. The current contract is in the first of two possible extension periods set to expire in September of two thousand twenty. Triway Services include residential, municipal, industrial, and construction construction waste collection services, temporary fence, and portable toilet rentals, material hauling services, and material processing services for the city's residential recycle depot. Triways was instrumental in the transition from the manual waste collection system to an automated cart collection service while providing feedback on the pre-existing deficiencies that have since contributed to a more cost-effective and efficient collection services. Triways has continued to provide reliable and consistent service in a professional and courteous manner while working closely with the city to provide suggestions and solution to waste management-related issues and topics. They have proven to be dependable, reliable, and have an excellent r- relationship with the city. This is this agreement would provide residential cart collection, multi-residential and municipal facility bin collection, and recycle depot material processing services for the city of Swift Current. Triways has proposed a ten-year contract to provide services to the city of Swift Current with two one-year options to extend. The contract length offers a eleven percent rate decrease to cart collection rates starting in two thousand twenty-one with multi-residential and municipal facility bin rates remaining constant at the two thousand twenty rates. Beginning in two thousand twenty-two, all rates would would increase annually by one point five percent for the duration of the contract. The estimated value of this contract for two thousand twenty-one is one point two million dollars. Uh, it is therefore respectfully recommended that uh that council approve the ten-year contract agreement with Triways Disposal Services Limited to provide residential waste collection services and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the contract.
Thank you, Mr. Minkin. Counsel, I will need a motion.
Your worship, I'll move that council approve the ten-year uh contract agreement with Triways Disposal Services Limited to provide residential waste collection services and that yourself and the city clerk be authorized to sign the contract.
Thank you, Council Freezen. Thank you, Council Tools. Uh, we will go through and see if anybody's got any questions, and I'll start it off with Council Freezen.
Well, thanks, your worship, and I guess the thing that really jumped out at me on this whole thing is the fact that um the contract length, uh, that being ten years, offers a ten or eleven percent rate decrease. So um I thought that was fairly significant with the numbers of dollars that we're talking about here, so um that looked good to me, and um I will certainly be supporting this contra- or this motion.
Thank you, Council Freezen. It jumped out, I'm sure, for all of us. Uh, next up, Council Dig.
Uh, thank you, your worship. I too had a concern about the length of the contract. Um, uh, but I think our solicitor uh has addressed some of those concerns that we had regarding that, so yeah, I I won't have too much trouble with this.
Thank you, Council Baudage.
Uh, thank you, your worship. I echo uh game uh Council Freezen's uh uh comments about the eleven percent discount. Over the the time, I know it is a long uh uh contract, but uh there are significant benefits to that. It appears in my mind anyhow, so I'll be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Martins.
Uh, thanks, your worship. I'm more of the same as the other council, too. The, I mean, the first thing that jumped out was the length of the contract, but then again, the second thing that jumped out just much was the discount as well, too, over the period of time, so. You know, as mentioned, Triways has been an incredibly good partner for us, uh, you know, for the last six six years or so, so it's uh, you know, it's good to see that they're in full support to continue to work along with the city as well.
Uh, thank you, Council Tools.
All well said, and nothing more to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Pluus.
Uh, thanks, your worship. Yeah, I think what uh some of the other counselors have mentioned have been uh points that certainly I considered as well when when reading this report, but I know that uh Triways has been a very good partner to the city. Uh, I know that the agreement allows us some flexibility moving forward in terms of uh delivery of of what types of services we want to have within the city. And I know that Triways has been innovative out and on their own as well uh in this market, so uh I'll be in support of the of this report.
Thank you, Council Pluus. All very well said. Uh, this motion's made by Council Freezen. It's seconded by Council Tools. All those in favor? Counsel, this motion's passed. Uh, please go ahead, Mr. Minkin.
Uh, thank you. Uh, this this report deals with the Saskabilities, and this is Recycle Depot Operational Contract. Since two thousand and eight, the Saskatchewan Abilities Council, known as Saskabilities, has provided contract contracted operational services for the city of Swift Current Residential Recycle Depot located at eleven hundred and one North Railway Street West. Current contract uh expires in two thousand twenty, and Saskabilities has indicated their desire to continue to provide these contracted services. The city of Swift Current Residential Recycle Depot greeted thirty-five uh thirty-five thousand visits or an average of twenty-nine hundred visitors per month in two thousand nineteen to accept paper, boxboard, cardboard, tin cans, and select plastics. Site staff assists residents and sorting materials into s- into specified bins which are weighed, baled, and transported directly to recycle recycling markets. This operation diverted four hundred and sixty tons of recycled materials from the landfill in two thousand nineteen. The recycle depot was supported by a multi-paper and packaging grant from the Multi-Material Stewardship Western Program. Saskabilities' vision and mission is to work together to build inclusive communities for people of all abilities and support people experiencing disabilities with program and services to enhance their life their lives. With five permanent staff position, casual positions, and over twenty-five percent of the employees experience disability, the city of Swift Current's recycle depot plays an important role in the mission of Saskabilities. The agreement with Saskabilities for the Residential Recycle Depot now includes new hours of operation to enhance the nine-thirty AM to five-thirty PM, Monday to Friday, uh, with the service extended to seven-thirty PM on Thursday evenings and from nine-thirty AM to three-thirty PM on Saturdays, excluding statutory holidays. The proposed three-year agreement is based on the cost of services provided plus an administration fee, and includes an incre- incremental two percent increase per year. The contract fees are are outlined in Appendix A. It is therefore respectfully recommended that council approve the three-year contract agreement with Saskabilities Swift Current Branch to provide operational services at the city of Swift Current Residential Recycle Depot and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the contract.
Thank you, Mr. Minkin. Counsel, I will need a motion.
Your worship, I'll move that council approve the three-year contract agreement with Saskabilities Swift Current Branch to provide operational services at the city of Swift Current Residential Recycle Depot and that yourself and city clerk be authorized to sign the contract.
Thank you, Council Freezen.
I'll second that, your worship.
Thank you, Council Martins. Counsel, we will go through and see if anybody's got any questions or comments. I'll start it off with Council Freezen.
Thanks, your worship. Well, um, this, to me, is just an all-round awesome partnership. There's so many good things about this that um I I, you know, it's it's been a great uh partnership with the abilities and um the recycling and everything that's part of it, so it's um great to see it being extended. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Freezen. Council Dig?
Yes, your worship. Thank you very much. Uh, there's several several parts of this report that please me. Um, yeah, seeing that the extended hours are gonna be happening, that helps me a lot. Uh, I like to use this recycling depot. I feel that the service that they we pre- are provided to us is is exceptional. Um, it, we do a fantastic job of getting our product sorted for for recycling. Uh, I'm just happy to have this agreement coming into place again for a few more years, and I'll certainly be supporting it. Thanks.
Thanks, Council Dig. Council Baudage?
Thank you, your worship. Uh, yes, I'll be supporting this. I think it's a great uh partnership that we've had, and I'm proud to ha- I'm proud that we were able to uh renew it again for another three years. Thank you.
Council Baudage. Council Martins?
So all been said already. Thanks.
Thanks, Council Tools.
Thank you. I certainly support Saskabilities' participation in in this service, and I do want to mention that the site staff, as as were identified, do an amazing job of helping the citizens and and being good teachers, teaching us how to sort and and put things into the right places. So thank you to everybody involved.
Council Tools. Council Pluus?
Uh, your worship, all was well said. I don't think I have anything to add.
Perfect and agreed. Moved by Council Freezen, seconded by Council Martins. All those in favor? Counsel, the motion's passed. Mr. Solberg, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you.
My apologies, before you do. Go ahead, please, Council Pluus.
Oh, sorry. Thanks, your worship. Prior to this report, I need to declare a conflict of interest. Uh, one of the parties involved uh is a corporation that my mother and father are both shareholders in, so I have to declare a conflict on that basis. Thanks, your worship.
Thank you, Council Pluus. Mr. Batillier will put him. All right. Council Pluus has now been put in the in the lobby or the waiting room of this Zoom meeting, and I will hand it over now to Mr. Solberg. Please go ahead.
Yes, thank you again, your worship.
Yes, thank you again, your worship. This uh report does deal with a request to subdivide some agriculture land uh from Marleyan Holdings Limited and K Bell. The city's received an application to subdivide approximately fifteen acres of agricultural land from parcel L Plan F S, sorry, five-nine S C zero-five-five-nine-three, within the northwest quarter of section thirty-two fifteen thirteen west of the third to accommodate the sale of privately-owned agriculture land. This parcel's called U R, which is Urban Reserve District, which allows for existing agriculture uses as a permitted principal use. The parcel's also located within a design, designated area of the zoning bylaw, flood hazard map, and will require certain conditions in order to prove any subdivision of the land. The attached plan of proposed subdivision will subdivide parcel L Plan five-nine S C zero-five-five-nine-three to create a fifteen-acre lot shown as parcel D. Under the zoning bylaw and section one thirty of the Planning and Development Act two thousand and seven, properties located within a designated area of the flood hazard map may re- uh require specific design standards as a condition of subdivision approval. Based on comments received from the Saskatchewan Water Security Agency and on previous approvals within a flood hazard area, the city is requesting this proposal be approved subject to the following conditions. Agriculture purposes or environmental reserve designation will be the only permitted uses for the area to be subdivided and remainder of parcel L, and any proposed change of use or new development within the area to be subdivided and the remainder of parcel L will require the developer to obtain a hydro and geotechnical investigation, a report prepared by a qualified professional in order to determine any site-specific design standards and construction specification required for development within this area. The final report is to be provided to the city at the developer's cost with any application for development permit, and any development will conform to the report's recommendations as a condition of the permit approval. In accordance with subsection one thirty-two of the, the act, the city will register an interest in the land titles registry for any parcel required to meet this condition of subdivision approval. Based on our mapping information, this interest will be registered on parcels D and L and will run with the lands until, until a development permit meeting the prescribed conditions has been approved by the city. This proposal was also circulated to various agencies for their review, and the comments were as follows. Uh, the Department of Highways had no objection. SAS Power, SAS Tel, the city's Swift Current Shaw Cable and SAS Energy all indicated that existing facilities and easements to be maintained, relocated, or terminated at uh the developer's cost. New facilities and easements may be uh required under a servicing agreement with the developer. The provision of dedicated lands under the act does not apply to this proposal since the land is being subdivided into lots of four hectares or more and will be used solely for agriculture purposes. With that, I would respectfully recommend that the planned proposed subdivision, a part of parcel L Plan five-nine S C zero-five-five-nine-three, extension zero, be approved subject to the conditions issued in this report pursuant to section one thirty of the Planning and Development Act two thousand and seven, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the certificate of approval.
Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Counsel.
Uh, your worship, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the, the plan that was submitted here by uh the general manager of planning and development.
Thank you, Counselor Baudage.
I'll second that, your worship.
Counselor Dig. Counsel, we'll see if anybody's got any questions or comments from Mr. Solberg. I'll start it off with Counselor Freezen.
No questions or comments. Thanks, your worship.
You, Counselor Dig. And Counselor Baudage.
No further questions, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Martins.
Nothing for me, your worship.
Counselor Tolls.
All good. Thank you.
You and, and uh to Mr. Solberg, thank you so much for the good work you've been doing uh with, with this particular landowner to be able to make this work for them. And, and I'll definitely be supporting this motion as well. With that, this motion is made by Counselor Baudage and seconded by Counselor Dig. All those in favor? Counsel, the motion's passed. Uh, Mr. Batillier, can you invite Counselor Pless back in? Welcome back, Counselor Pless. Uh, you're up next, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, your worship and members of council. The subject of this report is the twenty twenty municipal election. The Local Government Election Act twenty fifteen, hereinafter referred to as the Act, is the provincial statute that establishes the regulations and procedures for all municipal elections. Recent, recent amendments to the Act allows the city to establish a general election bylaw that may encompass several procedure and legislative matters previously approved by either resolution or under multiple bylaws. Other amendments, as well as current health and safety considerations of COVID-nineteen, will also require some changes to the city's previous election practices. The election date has been changed from the fourth Wednesday of October to Monday, November ninth, with this being the most important change to legislation. Under the Act and the city's administration bylaw, the city clerk is designated as the returning officer for the municipal elections unless otherwise determined by council. The Act provides that city council must make decisions on several matters related to conducting a municipal election. This report addresses these items for the municipal and school board elections being held on November ninth, twenty twenty. A general elections bylaw. As previously stated, a noted change to the Act provides for council to establish a general elections bylaw to address various matters pursuant to legislation. This is being recommended to update previously enacted bylaws pertaining to the process and conduct of a municipal election. Therefore, a general election bylaw will be brought to a future council meeting for approval. Regular polls, polling areas, polling places, and polling times. Administration is recommending that the establishment of three polling areas for election day, including Trailview Alliance Church, Innovation Credit Union Iplex, and the Chinook Golf Course, all of which are shown on the attached Schedule A to this report. All polling places are accessible and polls must be open from nine AM to close at eight PM. Other polls. The establishment of special polls, homebound polls, and advanced polls are being recommended as in the past. These polls are open to electors for at least three days and not more than fifteen days before the day of election. It must be open for a minimum of one hour and a required minimum of two election workers per poll. Administration is recommending the polling places as set out to Schedule B of this report. Mail-in ballots. This process allows for electors who anticipate not being able to vote on the day of the election or dates of any advanced polls. Given the uncertainty of COVID-nineteen epidemic, this may be preferred method of vo- voting. Therefore, a mail-in ballot will be offered to all electors of the city of Swift Current under the provisions to be included in the in general election bylaw. The election results for special polls, homebound polls, and advanced polls will be reported together with the mail-in ballots as one poll after eight PM on election day. Remuneration of election workers. Council's requirement to set remuneration to be paid to election officials acting in respect of an election is summarized in Schedule C to this report. Vote counting equipment. To replace outdated and unsupported equipment owned by the city, it is recommended that we enter into a lease with election systems and software for the use of current models consisting of four vote count machines with two ballot-on-demand printers, onsite election day support, shipping and supplies, and equipment operation training. Enumeration of voters list. Although the Act provides for the enumeration of electors and preparer preparations of a voters list, the city's process in past elections is to register electors when they attend the polls on election day or at any advanced poll. This has been effective and will continue for this election. Election costs, as previously done, are shared with the city and the school divisions, and this is once again being recommended. The order of candidates' names on the ballot. Section ninety-one of the Act provides council with four options on how to list the candidates' names on the ballot as followed. A, alphabetical order by surname. B, an order in the names are withdrawn from a receptacle. C, electronically generated in random order. Or D, arranging in rotating order. It is recommended that the names of candidates be listed by surname and order that they are withdrawn from a receptacle, as done in the past. Occupation on nomination paper and ballots. Amendments to legislation included removal of this requirement of the candidate's occupation on the nomination form and ballot. If council wishes to include the candidate's occupation on the nomination papers and ballot, city council must pass a bylaw. This would be included in the general election bylaw. Disclosure of campaign contributions and expenses. The Act provides that council may, by bylaw, at least sixty days prior to an election, establish disclosure requirements respecting campaign contribution and expenses or election campaign spending limits. This has not been established by previous councils, nor is it being recommended at this time. Plubus site. If a plubus site is to be held at the same time as a general election, a question will need to be approved by council. Council meeting scheduled. The current council continues in office until the newly-elected members are swollen in, sworn in. It is being recommended that council meeting of November second of twenty twenty be canceled. A communication plan is being developed to provide information for candidates, election officials, and the general public on the election process. Michael Batillier, Communications and Stakeholder Relations Coordinator for the city, has undertaken the task of setting up such platform on the city's website. Furthermore, a candidate's information guide will be prepared and provided to each person requesting a nomination form. This booklet will address a wide range of information such as key dates, qualifications, and advertising, et cetera. As well, general election information will be advertised in the local newspapers, on the radio, on the city's website, as well as various social media outlets. In consultation with the city's O H N S E M O coordinator, Ed Fonger, the city will consider the appropriate approach in delivering the municipal election while protecting the health and safety of all electors and election workers. Administration will closely monitor the status of COVID-nineteen as the election nears and continuously evaluate the level of risk preparedness required so that any necessary changes can be made accordingly. It is therefore respectfully recommended that the following be approved for the twenty twenty general election. A general election bylaw be prepared encompassing previous enacted bylaws as well as requirements within current legislation and be brought to a future council meeting for approval. The polling stations and areas as showing on the poll and map listed as Schedule A. Other polls as set out in Schedule B be established. Remuneration be paid to election workers as set out in Schedule C. An automated vote count equipment be leased from election systems and software. The names of candidates on the ballots be listed by order of surname as withdrawn from a receptacle. The occupation of candidates be included in the nomination paper and ballot. The disclosure of campaign contributions and expenses are not implemented at this time, and that the council meeting of November second, twenty twenty be canceled.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel.
Your worship, I will move that we uh, the nine points that were outlined by our city clerk be approved.
And Counselor Tolls.
I'll second that, your worship.
And Counselor Pless. Counsel, I will share with you that um, that our city clerk, Jackie Schlapp, has been working extremely hard on, on this exercise, given that it's COVID and there's lots of moving parts. Uh, I personally want to say thank you. I know you've been working with all the other city clerks in the cities across the province, as well as some of the mayors, and taking direction from the province and trying to build this together. So I know this, although this seems like a very long and administrative document, uh, there's a lot of work that's gone into it to get to this point. So with that, I will open it up if there are any comments or questions for council. I'll start it off with Counselor Freezen.
Thanks, your worship. I guess um, the first thing that occurs to me is that um, I really like the fact that we're going to be able to have mail-in ballots because depending where we're at with the COVID situation, there may be people that prefer that method of uh voting, and it, and it still gives them the opportunity to do that, so I think that's very, very important. And I have one question, uh, Jackie, just for clarification, on the um vote counting equipment. Um, it talks about four vote count machines and with two ballot-on-demand printers. So is there two printers with each machine?
Thank you for your question, Counselor Freezen. We will have four machines. A machine is required at each polling station with one machine used um, as a backup and for the special polls and mail-in ballots. The ballot-on-demand printers will be at two polling stations, and we will prepare, pre-print um, and access to be at the third polling station.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Freezen. Counselor Dig.
Yes, I, I just want to thank Madam Clerk for the work that she's put into this. I, I think it was a well, well-prepared document for us to consider. A lot of questions were answered. I, I do appreciate working with uh Mr. Fonger for the safety aspect of this too as well, and I, I'm, I'm sure everything's gonna be handled properly, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dig. Counselor Baudage.
Nothing further, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Martins.
Uh, I just uh say the same thing. I appreciate the work that was put into this um, uh, from Madam Clerk. You know, it's like, like you had said, there's a ton of stuff to go through, and there's all sorts of new regulations you have to deal with, and lots of concerns that you have to have with the citizens of the community when it comes to the voting side of things. So the amount of work and effort that's been put into, you know, communicate with other um, you know, uh, you know, other city clerks across the province and other mayors is, you know, I, I have great respect for that. So thank you very much for the dedicated work you put into it.
Thank you, Counselor Martins. Counselor Tolls.
Yeah, all well said. I think this last six months has taught us that we have to find innovative ways to do simple jobs, and I think this is a really good uh work. Thank you, uh, Madam Clerk, for all the work you've done.
Thank you, Counselor Pless.
I think all well said, your worship. Nothing to add.
Thank you. This report is moved by Counselor Tolls and seconded by Counselor Pless. All those in favor? Counsel, the motion's passed. That gets us through our interaction for this evening. It gets us down to new business. Counsel, we have two items that were included in your packages uh for your perusal to have a read-through, and these two items will be for receive and file. The first is the Swift Current Branch Library Board Meeting minutes held on June the third, twenty twenty. The second is the Southwest Transportation Planning Council Incorporated's Executive Working Committee meeting agenda uh for June the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty. Again, counsel looking for a motion to receive and file.
Hey, worship, I will uh make said motion to receive and file the minutes and agenda as mentioned.
Thanks, Counselor Martins.
I'll second that, your worship.
Thanks, Counselor Baudage. I can't manage. We have too many questions here, so all those in favor? Counsel, the motion's passed. That gets us down to uh through all of the business for this evening, and with that, uh, everyone, I just wanted to remind the public, we do have Market Square happening on Saturdays. Uh, we have had the good fortune of picking up some, some pretty fun items, and we know that all of our produce here in the southwest is, is starting to get ready, so please head over. Uh, we've got lots of safeguards in place and lots of city teammates making sure that we're all safe. Uh, pool's opening July sixth, as we heard earlier on, and just wanted to thank the entire community for all the good work that you continue to do uh to keep all of us safe throughout all of this COVID. And just one other thing, I, I wanted to, to extend uh our thoughts and our sympathies and prayers to the families of those that lost their lives last week in a, in an absolute tragic accident that happened just east of Swift Current. I know everyone here has been, been thinking of all of you, and, and no words can uh, can express uh, our, our heartfelt condolences. With that, counsel, I will be looking for a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
Hey, worship, I will make said motion to adjourn tonight's council meeting for Monday, June twenty-ninth.
Thanks, Counselor Martins.
And I will second that, your worship.
Thanks, Counselor Tools. Uh, we will be seeing everybody in about a month on June twenty-seventh. Uh, this motion is made by Counselor Martin, seconded by Counselor Tools. All those in favor? Have a great month of June, everybody, and a happy Canada Day on Wednesday.